Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us. Could you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight, we have Pastor Leonard Akers, who's Associate Pastor for local church at the Mill on Etowah, to deliver our invocation. Welcome, Pastor.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this night. We're grateful for this city. We're so blessed to be a part of this community. Just thank you for all the ways that you are caring for us through this community. Lord, I pray for all the folks who will come to this microphone and speak. I pray that you would give each of them clarity of thought and speech, so that they might speak what's on their hearts and do it well. I pray also, Lord, that you would grant them great peace in the middle of that, especially for those who aren't used to speaking into a microphone. On this night, Lord, we give you great thanks for the people who are on the front lines of caring for people who have suffered abuse. We cannot say thank you enough for their willingness and determination to walk with people who have been through things that, in some cases, are truly unspeakable. We pray that you would grant them continued blessings and resources so that they might continue to care for those people in our community who need healing in the worst way. Please come now and be present with this meeting in all the ways that you can, so that we might truly seek to be unified in all the things that matter. We love you, and we thank you for hearing this prayer. Pray all these things in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Akers. Called to order are October 5th, 2023, council meeting. We'll begin with a consideration to approve tonight's agenda. Are there any changes or revisions or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All members voted for the motion. Guests and visitors, I have a proclamation to present. I'll read the proclamation and ask our guests to join me down front for a photo. This is the City of Canton Proclamation 20231005 Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Whereas millions of Americans face physical and emotional abuse at the hands of their significant other each year, and whereas domestic violence defined as abusive behavior in a personal relationship in a lifetime, one in four of women and one in seven men experience severe violence at the hands of an intimate partner. And whereas organizations like Cherokee Family Violence Center work towards the elimination of domestic violence and provide necessary services, working with local communities, and serving by providing emergency shelter, advocacy, education, awareness, community resources, and collaboration to ensure that all victims are empowered to achieve self-sufficiency. And whereas domestic violence can affect anyone regardless of their age, race, gender, or socioeconomic status, leaving an impact on thousands of individuals and families across Georgia over the years. And whereas organizations across Georgia are working to end domestic violence and provide support survivors need to find their voice, while law enforcement remains committed to ensuring justice is served to individuals who harm those who trust them. Now, therefore, I, Bill Grant, Mayor of the City of Canton, do hereby proclaim October 2023 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the City of Canton. And tonight, honored to have my friends and to accept the proclamation, Meg Rogers, who's Executive Director of the Cherokee Family Violence Center, and also joining us are multicultural advocates Kenya Chinchilla and Susana Baurios. So please join me down front. Council, in your package, you have the draft minutes from our September 28th meeting. Are there any changes or revisions or motions to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All members voted for the motion. We have one informational item this evening. That's a review of the August financials. Ms. Forrester?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm here to present the August 2023 financials. And I just wanted to make a few comments on some items that you'll see in the presentation. The financials include the budget amendments that were approved last week. The semi-annual debt service, in the amount of $1,072,826, on the CBA 2014 bond was paid. This bond was originally taken out in 2005 to cover various water and sewer system upgrades, and the bond is scheduled to be paid off in 2030. And we received over $900,000 in sewer tap fees from West Plant Investors for Access Canton, and that is the development that is located on Hospital Road. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Forrester? Thank you, Ms. Forrester. Appreciate it. Thank you. We have Mr. Tolan. I think you have some announcements.
Yeah, I do have two, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. One, I've just talked to Mr. Patton, and it appears we have our first ADU permitted or in the process of being permitted, kind of behind the Riverstone, north of Riverstone, so very excited to announce that. We have probably a few around town that maybe got under the radar, but this one is official, and very excited that hopefully this is the first of many to come in the way of ADUs in the city. The second thing is on next Saturday, the 14th of October, there's an event at the Timbers, at the Mill on Etowah. It is called, I wanted to say Downton Abbey, but it's Downton Millie, kind of in the persona of Downton Abbey. And it should be a great event. We're going to kick it off tomorrow night at First Friday. Apparently, a few of us have roped ourselves into dressing up in our attire that we're going to be wearing to the event next Saturday night. So if you see us around, we're not insane. Well, we may be insane, but we're not any more insane. And we'll have some cards to pass out. We'll be doing some fundraising, some opportunities to kind of get involved if people choose to do so. So, I'm sorry. It's for the homeless. It's the Homeless Coalition of Cherokee County. I'm sorry. Thank you. So it's a great cause. It's a big need. There's a ton of homeless folks in Canton and in Cherokee County. Some of those folks, I'm sure, are some of their clients of Cherokee Family Violence Center or have been in the past. It's a huge problem. It's an opportunity that people like Leonard Akers are tackling, and we're very honored to be involved in it. So I hope you will come out to First Friday tomorrow night and show your support for not only First Friday, but the Homeless Coalition of Cherokee County. And then, if anybody chooses to participate, or either financially or participate in joining the event, it's next Saturday, the 14th, from 7:00 to 10:00 p.m. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tolan. And Mr. Tolan mentioned that tomorrow is First Friday. It is the last First Friday of the season, featuring On the Border, which is the Eagles Tribute Band, beginning at 6:00 p.m. So please come celebrate the last of what has been a wonderful First Friday season. And please come enjoy us and thanking our Main Street program, our Public Works Department, and all the volunteers that have made this event just a wonderful season this year. So, any other announcements? Okay. Move on to our 10-minute public input. We have two citizens signed up to speak. So when I call your name, please come forward to the podium and state your name and address clearly in the microphone and speak into the microphone. Begin with Landon Dickerson.
Good afternoon. My name's Landon Dickerson. My property address is 8798 Knox Bridge Highway. And my reason for coming to you today is I'm going through a rezoning process with Cherokee County. From my understanding, they've asked for y'all's input on my property. So I've brought down my proposal of what I've ended up proposing to the county to end up advising y'all of what I've been doing in the past. And I actually have been in the City of Canton for three years. My understanding is y'all are not wanting another tow truck company within the radius of the City of Canton, and I've actually already been here. So I do have my proposal that I have that is going submitted to them. But I'm curious to see why y'all are denying or why y'all are interested in denying the y'all's input of why I should not be rezoned.
This is just input. There's no dialogue with council. It's just an opportunity for citizens to give us their input. But if you want to share and leave your information with Mr. Green, he can get that information to council and respond accordingly. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Next, Clara Ellis.
Hi. My name is Clara Ellis.
Good evening.
And I want to thank the pastor, first of all, for praying for those of us who don't like to speak on microphone. I live at 204 Hunter's Ridge, which is in Station at Prominence, directly off of Prominence Parkway, Prominence Point Parkway. I just simply want to appeal to the survey committee and to those who will be studying this area. It's obvious, it will be very obvious to them, the commercial area and the needs of traffic control in that area. It'll be very obvious. What may not be so obvious is the residential. In our one neighborhood, which there are at least six or seven out there, I haven't surveyed all of them, there are 356 residents, and we have one outlet, one street that goes out to Prominence Point Parkway. We are opposite another subdivision, and their only outlet to Prominence Point is that way. So I would just like to call their attention to 1.2 miles south of the commercial area that is very dangerous. We have lots of senior citizens. We have dog walkers. We have mothers and baby carriages that are very active and very walk, they walk the sidewalks where there are sidewalks. But some of them have to cross Prominence Point Parkway, and I just appreciate their attention to that.
Thank you, Ms. Ellis. So we'll move forward with our consent agenda. We have three items on the consent agenda. As usual, I will read these three items. And if there's any item that any member would like moved off the consent agenda for further discussion, we will be happy to do so. These are three items that were on discussed in our last and subsequent meetings. And whereas not a lot of discussion or questions, but again, we can move any of them off if we need to. Item A, approval of award of task order number one to Kecken Woods for engineering services to relocate water and sewer lines as part of the West Main Street pedestrian corridor in the amount of $28,500. And again, just for the record, this would be funded from the Water and Sewer Fund. Item B, approval of award of task order number two to Kecken Wood for engineering services for traffic study and concept layouts for intersections along Prominence Point Parkway. This amount would be $35,805. That was left off the agenda, but the amount of that task order is $35,805, and the funding would be from impact fees and/or SPOST. And then, item C, approval of award of the River Mill District Pedestrian Bridge at the Mill on Etowah Design Contract to Heath and Lineback in the amount of $234,607.15. Just for, to refresh your memory, this is a federal grant-funded project. And this, and so this will be, this will cover at least 50% of that, those costs, but this project's also, also is, could be funded by SPOST, impact fees, and also is eligible for TAD funds. But this is also eligible for the grant funds for the federal grant we received in excess of $600,000. So those three items are on the consent agenda. If there's anything anyone would like moved off the consent agenda for further discussion, or are there any motions? Any discussion?
All members here voted for the consent agenda. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All members voted for the consent agenda. Moving into old business, we have one item, discussion and possible action on amendment to the Development Code concerning breweries, distilleries, and wineries. Mr. Green?
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. As we discussed at our last meeting in the public hearing, this is in ordinance to add breweries, distilleries, and wineries as conditional uses in the general commercial zoning district, the central business district, the light industrial, and the planned development district. This proposal will also delete on the land use table manufacturer alcoholic beverages. And in its place, there will be three additional lines, one for brewery, one for distillery, and one for winery. We will also add into Chapter 106 of the glossary the following definitions. Distillery, an establishment where the distillation of alcoholic spirits takes place. And winery, an establishment where wine is made. We did not have any opposition to the proposed amendment during the public hearing. Ms. McGrew did ask about would the places be able to have events, how would odor be controlled, and what size of the establishment. During the CUP process, with their letter of intent that they will have to submit, Mr. Peppers and I decided or thought that those issues could be answered there. Their letter of intent would have to be very descriptive as to the size of the place. The control of odors, I believe, would be a function of either building inspections or code enforcement. If we do have a complaint, then those two departments will engage in solving that issue. And that's basically it.
Okay. Thank you. So again, we discussed this at our last meeting. Any questions for Mr. Green? Any discussion? Ms. McGrew?
Mr. Green, thank you for those answers. That's all I have. Just thank you.
You're welcome. I'd like to make a motion. Given that the, this particular topic will be governed by the CUP process, I would like to make a motion to amend the Development Code to allow breweries, distilleries, and wineries. Appropriate, Mr. Dyer?
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Motion and second? Is my microphone on? It's dead? Thank you. So I have a motion and a second. No further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All members voted for the motion. Moving into new business, item A, discussion and possible action on design request for CDR 2307-128 at 152 Prominence Point Parkway. Ms. Anderson?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This item is an appeal to the design review decision that was made. Grand Commercial Contractors LLC has submitted a letter seeking to appeal the final decision of the Canton Design Review Team. Very brief backstory, as a part of their renovations to the existing building, which will be Cusavale Credit Union at 152 Prominence Parkway, Prominence Point Parkway. The building was prepped and primed to be painted without the review and approval of the Design Review Committee, along with other exterior changes. The applicant was notified and asked to stop work to seek design review approval prior to completing any exterior changes. The application was submitted on July 25th, 2023, and at the design review meeting on August 2nd, 2023, the design review team denied the request to paint the exterior building based on negative impact to surrounding and adjacent properties. The applicant was allowed to make the other changes, as noted, which included adding a walk-up ATM, adding a small awning over the ATM, and installing new gutters. Additionally, they were allowed a sign permit. Today, I'm asking if you would vote to hear this request at the following meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. I want to say we certainly appreciate this process and appreciate our design review team and our staff. Certainly, in my opinion, if there's going to be an appeal, there's two outlets there, but certainly, in my opinion, it's going to be an appeal that's certainly appropriate for council to hear this appeal. So that's my thoughts. Any discussions or questions for Ms. Anderson? Mr. Peppers?
The only thing I would suggest is that perhaps you wait to hear the appeal at the first meeting in November. That would allow time for us to communicate back to the applicant and give them time to have whomever they would like here. Sometimes 14 days is a little quick, depending on where people are coming from and schedules.
Yeah. I was going to say, neglect to say that if council did consider hearing the appeal, that maybe November, or the first meeting in November, that would be ample time for staff to coordinate the appeal. But those are my thoughts.
Would that require a motion to hear it? I can make the motion. November?
It would.
There's no other counsel. Then I'd like to make a motion that council hears the appeal on the design request appeal for CDR 2307-128 at 152 Prominence Point Parkway to the first meeting in November.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All members voted for the motion. Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Item B, discussion to award a contract to Geo Hydro Engineers for geotechnical services at the Water Pollution Control Plant. Mr. Tabian?
Thank you. When the project was bid back in 2020, there was an allowance item in there for geotechnical services. We have, it was, it was an estimate at the time. We have pretty much used up all of that money. We did change the project some. And what we're looking to do is to have a contract directly with the testing services firm as opposed to the contractor doing it. And this would take us through the completion of the project. It is for $101,898. And then there is a $10,000 owner's allowance in there, so if we don't use that, we get that back. So the other advantage of contracting directly with them is there is no markup for the contractor, so we get a break there. And it's more of a, you know, you're, have the independent agency looking after the contractor and testing and checking their work as opposed to the contractor paying the firm to check their work.
So by contract directly, we'd be saving money on?
Yeah, a little bit. And it is budgeted in the fiscal year '24 budget.
Okay. And that's something you'd be asking us to consider, the contract at the October 19th meeting?
Yes.
Any questions for Mr. Tabian?
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Item C, discussion of quick claim deed for power line easement on Reinhardt College Parkway. Mr. Dyer?
Yes, and I neglected to ask that this be for a vote tonight, so I didn't have possible action on there. But I would, they have a closing coming up. So this is a property somebody was buying from Brightsasser, and in the title search, they discovered the city had an easement granted to it in 1983 by the Canton Texto Mills for running electric lines, which clearly we don't need. And so they've asked us to release that to clear their title. So this quick claim deed would just give up our right to run electric lines across this property.
Okay.
I will say that there's already been two hotels and a storage building business built on the same property that has the easement. So.
Okay. So that wouldn't be anything for monetary?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. So you're saying we do need to take action on this tonight?
If you would, yes.
So do we need to first amend the agenda?
I don't think so. I think you could just make a motion to approve the quick claim deed.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Dyer, or is there an emotion?
That will be in the, that will make its way into the minutes, though, so no need to amend.
I'm sorry.
That will make its way into the minute, so no need to amend the agenda. Is that right?
Correct.
All right.
I mean, I don't know that the agenda has to say possible action, but I know that's the way we do it. I just didn't think about that.
Right. It is a discussion. So, okay.
I'd like to make a motion, please. I motion to approve the quick, quick claim deed for the power line easement on Reinhardt College Parkway.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All members voted for the motion. Item D, discussion of Certified City of Ethics Renewal. Mr. Peppers?
Good evening. The Georgia Municipal Association has a longstanding program called Certified City of Ethics. That program requires that cities that are certified recertify every four years. In the agenda packet, you'll see a copy of the ethics resolution that was approved by council on November 21st, 2019. And what we have in here is a draft copy for you to consider. We're not asking for action tonight. We can act on this later on this month if you would like. One thing that will be a little bit different with our recertification is that in July of 2021, the city rewrote the ethics order. 2021, the city rewrote the ethics ordinance. And as we file our resolution with Georgia Municipal Association, we will also file a copy of that new ethics ordinance with them. The ethics ordinance should be signed by every elected official, so it's a little bit different than some of the other resolutions that we have, which are, which are simply signed by the mayor and attested by the clerk and sometimes signed off on by the city manager. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have on that particular resolution or process.
And I just want to reiterate for the, for the public, we did rewrite, this council rewrote the ethics ordinance in July 2021 after the committee did a lot of, a lot of study in comparing ordinances around the state. But really, the ordinance, ethics ordinance was updated to have the best practices and the most updated to have the strongest and best ethics ordinances, practices of any city in Georgia. So just wanted to reiterate that. Something we're very proud of. So I think, believe it's one of the first actions that this council did after a lot of work and study. So want to commend that. So of course, we want to proceed with this. And with our new ethics ordinance, we'll be proud to be recertified as the City of Ethics. So any questions, comments? So is this something we can proceed with at the next meeting, or?
Yes, we'll put it on the next agenda for action.
Certainly. Thank you. And, Mr. Peppers, your report?
Just a couple of items. First, there was, there was an announcement made, and I wanted to make it well. As Cherokee County is working to put the tie-in on Technology Ridge Parkway and Bluffs Parkway, there will be a detour on Bluffs Parkway for a period of time. That information is, has been sent out by the city on social media. We'll also be putting it out through additional information in emails as we get closer to the date later this month. Ultimately, that allows for utility tie-ins and all of that in that particular area. And so we, we know that that is always a disruption for individuals when we have to make, when we have to make detours like that. But we do want to get that done as quickly as possible so we can continue on with that road project at Cherokee County. Second of all, I did want to let you know that, as you mentioned, we have our last First Friday. Sometimes people get really excited about First Friday, and they might put their chairs out a little earlier than they should. We would just always try to remind people that there's a lot of work that goes into setting up for First Friday. So if you give us the day before to do some of that setup, that's always helpful to us. Doesn't mean people won't put their chairs out on Thursday. They shouldn't, but if they do, they might get moved, you know, because there is work that we have to do in the park. So we do want to make sure that the public understands that. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have for me.
Questions for Mr. Peppers? Thank you, Mr. Peppers.
Thank you. Oh, I do have one more. I apologize. Our team member of the month for September, August, sorry, was Felicia Wright. Felicia works in our HR department. It's kind of interesting, I like to say, because Felicia is a little bit more introverted, and Ms. Waters is a little bit more extroverted, so we get the best of both in the HR department. But we had an opportunity to recognize her in September. She's very helpful. There's, she also works specifically on some certain financial tasks as well, so she gets shared around upstairs a little bit on those duties. She's always, she's always ready to do the work. She's very dependable, and that's what her colleagues noted in her. So we were excited to be able to recognize her as our August teammate of the month. And I just wanted to make sure we recognized her at the meeting tonight, so. That's it.
Congratulations, Ms. Wright. Thank you. We didn't have any counsel introduce items at the agenda approval. I'm just making sure.
Mr. Mayor, it's really just an announcement that I didn't make under announcement.
Okay, Ms. Mayor.
Just if anybody's sitting at home on Saturday afternoon at 12:30, an episode of The American Dream, a nationally acclaimed television show, is going to be on, and it features Canton's economic development initiatives and public art. So that's at 12:30 on Saturday on Channel 69, the CBS affiliate in Atlanta, Comcast Channel 10, streaming on Roku, Apple TV, Android TV, Amazon, and Chromecast.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you. I have nothing this evening. Kind of a short meeting tonight, I think made up the long meeting last week. And we'll get you out of here tonight so you can go home and thaw out. So we're going to get this thermostat figured out. So thank you, everyone. And with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor say aye. All members voted for the motion. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.